Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for February 7. And we don't have any interviews today, do we? Okay, great. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
How about, I'll come back to Bingle. How about Councilmember Cathcart?
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
And back to Councilmember Bingle. I see him, but I'm not hearing him.
Oh, here he comes.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize I didn't have my headphones in. I'm here.
Okay. All council members are present.
All right. And Mr. Perkins, are you briefing us this afternoon for February 14?
Yes, sir, Council President, I am.
All right. Take it away.
Thank you, sir. Item number one on the consent agenda, master value blanket order with Conal Oil. Mr. Rick Giddings will present. Mr. Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, city council members. Today, we are seeking approval for, to renew a master value blanket contract with Conal Oil for various automotive lubricants such as oil, grease, styrolyte fluid, which are used by fleet services and other departments across the city. This renewal will utilize Washington State Contract Number 02418 and be valid until July 31, 2026. Expense is not expected to exceed $150,000 per year during its roughly four and a half year term for a maximum total of $665,500.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item two, value blanket renewal with Pete Lean and Sons. And our presenter is David Payne. Mr. Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members, and Mr. Perkins. This value blanket renewal is the first of three with Pete Lean and Sons from Rapid City, South Dakota, for the purchase and delivery of high calcium quicklime at the waste-to-energy plant. This contract is good from March 1, 2022, to February 28, 2023, with no additional cost not to exceed $1.5 million plus tax. High calcium quicklime is used to reduce the acid in the flue gas and control the final pH of the ash that comes out of a boiler. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Item number three on the consent agenda, we have two purchase agreement renewals. One is with Poldyne Inc., the other is with Kamara Water Solutions, both for the Riverside Water Park Reclamation Facility under 3A and B. And Mike Cannon is going to give us the briefing. Mr. Cannon.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Perkins and council members. This is a request for renewal, a second of two renewals for polymer, for Polydine Corporation. The cost is going to be $467,100, goes through March 1 of this year through February 28 of '23. There is an increase on these today because of the transportation and raw materials have gone up, so want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then for the second one is alum from Kamira Corporation. And that one also had an increase, and it was, is $2,678,400. The alum is used for phosphorus removal. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
Council President, members of the council. Item four, an agreement with Compunit. Mike Sloan, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Council President, council. Item four is request for your approval for the purchase of an extensive refresh of our network equipment from Compunit under the Washington State Contract. This purchase is out of our capital, is part of our SIP replacement, and it's a strategic part of what we call Phase Three of our network upgrades to advance the technology as well as aligning to the increased security needs of the network. So asking your approval of the $407,436 purchase, which includes one year of maintenance support. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Item five, a consultant agreement with Murray Smith to provide engineering study of fluoridation. Briefing will be Catherine Miller. Ms. Miller.
Thank you, council. This is a contract with Murray Smith. We went through a request for qualification process or a few processes to select Murray Smith. It will be a technical study to understand what it will take, financially speaking, to implement fluoridation in our water system. It's a contract for $599,300. It'll run about 18 months, and we'll be presenting that back to council upon its completion. Any questions?
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Thank you. Just want to reiterate that, because we've had some emails from folks, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that this isn't us going forward with implementing, this is us going forward with a study to find out what the process is and what the cost is, so that I'm hopeful this would go to the ballot for an advisory vote. We haven't decided as a council yet. And that if it does, then voters will be informed. So I just want to make sure that the public knows this isn't a tacit approval of fluoridation, it is getting the information that we need. Thank you.
Council President, I would, I would just like to ask if we could, next Monday, if we could take number five at the same time as 0016, since they relate together.
Yep, I kind of assumed that you might ask that. And so, yeah, my plan is to take them together and just have public testimony one time, regardless of which issue people want to address. But, yeah. And unfortunately, it is Valentine's next Monday, but often on fluoride, there's a lot of attention, so we'll probably be a late night. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Item six, a power purchase agreement between the city's water utility and Avista Utilities for the city's Upper River Hydroelectric Project. The presenter is Katie Olson. Ms. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council members. This contract is a power purchase agreement between the city of Spokane's Water Utility and Avista Utilities, defining the terms for the sale of surplus power generated from the city's upriver hydroelectric project to Avista, effective upon signing through December 31, 2037, for a term of 15 years. Revenue is anticipated to be $3 million over the life of the contract. The second contract is also a power purchase agreement between the city of Spokane's Solid Waste Utility and Avista, defining the terms for the sale of surplus power generated from the city's waste-to-energy facility to Avista, effective upon signing through December 30, 2037, for a term of 15 years. Revenue is expected to be $6 million over the life of the contract. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Items eight and nine are standard items on our agenda. Eight A deals with claims and payments for Parks and Library. Eight B deals with payroll claims previously approved. Those will be completed and filled out for the next council meeting on Monday, February 15. Item nine, city council minutes, which will also be reflective on February 14 as well. Council President, that concludes the consent agenda. All right.
Carry on.
Moving, thank you, sir. Moving forward then to the special budget ordinance, SBO, for contribution from the Spokane Transit Authority for the Gardner Avenue Project. Briefer is Marlene Feist, Ms. Feist.
Actually, this is for the full SBO of nearly $4 million to pay for a slate of grind and overlay work on local access streets that would be in more commercial areas. It does include revenue from the Spokane Transit Authority, who will pay for a portion of the Gardner Avenue work that would be included as part of that project, so they would pay half of that. Gardner, of course, is all adjacent to the FTA garage, but also adjacent to our Behavioral Crisis Mental Health Intervention Center that we just opened with the county. All of these locations really do have the opportunity to improve areas that are commercial in nature. For example, two of the streets are adjacent to the Providence Medical Facility Complex by Sacred Heart, another is in the NEPTDA, and still more, obviously, next to that, Behavioral Health Center, as well as a couple of streets around the city's own public works facilities, so our Fleet and Solid Waste Facility Streets and Park Operations there in the Tewery Neighborhood Hood. You know, so we do put a lot of truck traffic there, so we want to be a good neighbor and help the existing businesses around us. So this, if this SBO is approved, we would go ahead and move these projects forward as part of the 2022 construction season.
I just had a question. After the briefing, I think at Pies, I heard at least a couple of council members weren't so excited about the choices of where the projects were in their district. And so, I'm just wondering, is there flexibility on that? Or if we vote this, this way, then that is set the ones that the Streets Department has proposed?
Well, this is an SBO, right? So this is just the movement of the financial resources. I did share twice the list of projects that we had considered, so if council wants to take a look at those, certainly we have another week before this is voted on as well. But we would be willing to entertain a swap if something wasn't up to the, you know, if there was another one on that list or someplace else that you wanted us to consider. I was kind of hoping, that's why I sent out the list a couple times, hoping that I would get that feedback from council to have it received yet.
Thanks for sending those out, and I think that's why I wanted to ask the question, just to make it clear to everybody that this, this is the time, if you want to propose a different option, you should do it in the next week. So, all right. And thanks, Marlene, for bringing everything forward. People always want their streets fixed, so that's great. All right. Back to you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. Emergency ordinance. This is to establish an election to be held on April 26, 2022, for the Emergency Medical Services Levy, and our presenter is Paul Injosi. Mr. Injosi.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. This was just briefed this afternoon at the Public Safety Committee meeting. I'm just on in case anybody had any additional questions that were addressed or needed some additional information.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, and just listening to the conversation that we had during our committee today on this, is there some more information that might be able to come forward that will specifically delineate how the, the additional dollars that this is going to raise will be spent? Some sort of a, kind of a specific plan, so that we have a handle on, you know, where those dollars are going and why? And, and just, I think we're going to get a lot of questions from the public on that. And of course, we need this to pass, and we want to make sure that this, you know, program continues, but I think we're going to get a lot of questions from the public as to that increased amount, and we're going to need to see some kind of a plan, I think, as to how those dollars would be spent above and beyond, you know, how the dollars in the past have been, have been spent. So something like that, I think, would be really helpful to have.
We can get that and provide it to council.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, just, I'm agreeing with Councilmember Cathcart there, same thing, but it could be kind of broken down on the difference between labor and capital, where you predict that would go. And then I'm also just concerned about kind of the communications plan and how we're going to take this to voters, to educate them in such a short timeline. And it doesn't sound like we have an idea yet of where those ones are going to be, kind of what support the mayor's going to be doing behind it. Is she going to be holding a press conference? Is she going to be going to neighborhood councils? Kind of what's the, what's the plan to educate the community of this? And I know she can't tell you how to vote it, that's all, Ormsby over there, but just like the education of it. Because I think like the superintendent of the school district goes around all the neighborhood councils to talk about the school levy, and does not tell you how to do it, but does the education aspect.
We could certainly provide more information on that as well. I don't have that today. I was prepared to speak to any of the technical questions about the process moving forward. I think this is following off of the same timeline and path of the 2016 renewal, if that, if that helps at all. They were able to, to do that public information piece, and I think that looks like he's ready to weigh in.
Sure. Thanks, Paul. In the past, there's been a number of components to the education campaign. I don't know enough about this year, what it is, but typically, the fire chief and others are out speaking in the community. The mayor has indicated her support for the dollar amount, and so whether Chief Schaefer and others have got the education component spelled out yet or not, I don't know, but I think if they don't yet, they soon will, so we can get to that information. Then separately, a number of support groups for the fire department that include employees, the chiefs on their own time, and firefighters and EMS workers have also done a fair amount of camp, positive campaigning for it. But again, they have to do that on their own time, and they have to use their own money, they can't use city money. The city has also in the past done an insert in utility bills, reminding people when the election is, and setting forth some facts about the election, and encouraging people to call an information hotline with questions. So they followed a pattern in the past, and I suspect it's going to be pretty similar this year. But we, as I think Councilman Zepone said, we can't do anything that encourages people to vote one way or the other. All we can do as a city is share information.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yes. Mr. Ormsby, you just sent an email as to, I think you were explaining why it had to be an emergency ordinance. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, the statute requires whenever you have, and this is what's called an excess levy, it's an addition to what the city can charge absent a vote of the people. Whenever you do an excess levy, the statute says that the governing body, in this case the city council, needs to declare an emergency, i.e. there's a special need for this money, and therefore, an excess levy is being presented to the voters for approval. And so that is the method that's spelled out in the statute. School levies are done the same way, and so any excess levy has to be approved, and the statute uses the term emergency. So in the past, and I wasn't here when these were done in the past, but that's how the city's done it in the past, and I think they're just following the requirements in the statute.
So then, the emergency isn't, oh, man, we need the funding now, it's just that, and it's the same process that we've gone through with, with this same levy in the past, of we have to declare an emergency to move forward with this?
Right.
Any other questions for Paul? All right. And thanks, Mr. Ormsby, for that clarification, because we were shooting in the dark earlier today, so I appreciate that.
All right. Very rarely do I get to shine light on anything, so I'm glad I could do it this time.
Next up, resolutions, final reading ordinance. The first is, again, the Emergency Medical Services Levy requesting that the Spokane County Auditor hold a special election on April 26, 2022. Mr. Injosi is here to answer any questions, if there are any additional ones. Okay? With that, the next item, Council President Beggs, is the water fluoridation item.
Yeah, so this is just a resolution that makes it clear that the council is committed that once we get the actual data and evidence back from the 30% design and feasibility study, that we will conduct a public process with that information, so that people know the actual cost, how it'd work, et cetera, so that whatever decision going forward is made with actual information and data. So it's not binding, it's just a statement of intent.
All right. First reading ordinance is a vacation of an alley. Mr. Eldon Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council. I'll bring this one up here to talk about it. We previously had the hearing on this vacation back in April of last year, and it was approved subject to the conditions. And one of the conditions was we retained an easement for Comcast and Avista for the full length of that alley. Since that time, the applicants have been working with Avista and Comcast, and they've relocated the Comcast utilities out of that area, and Avista only wants to retain the west 35 feet of this for an easement. So we're simply coming back forward to you for a request to do a new first reading of the ordinance, where we release the easement for Comcast and only reserve a 35-foot section of this thing for Avista. So that's what the action before you is, is a new first reading of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And finally, hearings, H1A and B designate certain areas for multifamily tax exemption. Briefing will be from Cherry Stripes. Ms. Stripes.
Council, thank you for this opportunity. I will say that we've talked about this already four times. So what we're doing is we are setting in hearing for next week for your consideration of adding Garland District to the multifamily tax boundary, as well as a small portion of the University District. I've had up the maps before, we've gone through this. Would you like another presentation? Sounds good. Thank you, and I'll see you next week.
All right.
Council President, that concludes the advanced agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for February 14?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. Advanced agenda is approved, and that brings us to today. I don't, um, okay, I see one request. Well, I see a couple requests. So one request is to suspend the rules so that we can add one planning commission appointment. Want to tell us who that is?
Yes. Let me get it here. The planned commission appointment is Ryan Patterson.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules for a purpose of adjusting our agenda for the legislative session. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion about suspending the rules? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay, rules are suspended. We interviewed Ryan today, and this would allow Ryan to be appointed to the planning commission right away and get to work. We know we're nowhere there. Is there a motion to add? Oh, I guess we don't have to add, eh, well, is there a motion to add the appointment for Ryan Patterson to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of adding the appointment of Ryan Patterson to the agenda tonight, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. That'll be added ahead of our legislative session, and then I'm just looking at my notes on the agenda, and it looks like, and maybe Eldon, you can speak to this, that on the hearings for a vacation, they would like to delay that for a week on North Minnehaha Edition.
Yeah, the App and Avista are still trying to work out a final arrangement for an easement under, different than what we have on the recommended conditions right now, so they've requested a week to see if they can hammer those out before they have the hearing, so...
All right. Is there a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I will, I will so move that we defer one week.
Okay. So that would be to the 14th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving hearing one, the North Minnehaha Edition, to February 14th, indicate by saying aye.
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 And all the, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. I actually should have done this a little better. I would also like to get a motion for the first reading ordinance, C36172, till next week. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Hearing seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. First reading ordinance also moved as a companion. All right. Those are all the requests I have, oh. There is a motion to add, what's the number?
0017, 2022, 0017.
So there is a proposal to add a resolution amending our boards and commissions' resolutions to make some changes, essentially substituting Councilmember Zepone, or Councilmember Wilkerson for Councilmember Zepone to join the Visit Spokane and the TPA Commission. And is there one other change, too?
Adding Lori to the, to the subcommittee for the land use.
Oh, yeah. In the other word, add Councilmember Kinnear to the Rules Review Subcommittee of the Steering Committee of Elected Officials. So is there a motion to add Resolution 00172 this evening's agenda?
So moved to add. Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? Okay. Then, if there's no other requests for agenda changes, we'll go to this evening's consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, lease of a Ford Ranger for the Engineering Department using the Enterprise Master Contract. Monthly lease amount is $526.48 for 36 months. Total lease cost is estimated at $18,953.28. Number two, contract renewal for HR software support with NeoGov Incorporated to include subscription services and rights to use NeoGov licenses for the city from February 12, 2022 through February 11, 2023, $81,958.46, including tax. Number three, first of two one-year contract renewals with ACN for sales for heavy equipment body repair not to exceed $50,000. B, fleet painting for heavy equipment body repair not to exceed $450,000. Number four, four-year contract with Coeur d'Alene Service Station Equipment, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, for on-call field facility maintenance and repair services for fleet services, estimated cost of $300,000. Number five, report to the mayor pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through January 28, 2022, total $13,365,886.92. With Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $12,895,818.35. Number six, city council meeting minutes for January 13, January 20, corrected in January 24, 2022.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. Consent agenda has passed. We are going to go into executive session until 4:45 to discuss, oh, sorry.
Council President?
Yeah.
I was wondering if we were going to talk about warming shelter expenses during briefing.
You did. You made a request to do that. So before we go into executive session, Councilmember Zepone, I think you might have some questions, and Chief Financial Officer Tonya Wallace and City Administrator Perkins are both here and prepared, or they know that you're going to answer questions, and generally what they are. I don't know if they'll be able to answer all of them, but I will turn it over to you and then any other council members who want to talk about warming centers in advance of our special budget ordinance tonight.
Thank you very much. So we were talking earlier today with Councilmember Bingle and Council President Beggs, and we were just discussing expenses, so had some confusion that we wanted to... Still had some confusion that we wanted to clear up. And first, Councilmember Bingo, you can help me remember because I didn't take notes of everything. But one of the questions was, so the $570,000 is the total cost of the emergency shelter for outstanding bills that we have to pay for the convention center. Wanted to make sure that was my correct understanding. That is not yet the final number because we're still waiting on some of those expenses. And then a follow-up question I had to that is, is that all of the funds that we have allocated for emergency shelters for the remainder of the year? I believe that is $300,000. So what are we going to do over the summer and into the fall? And where do those extra funds come from? Are they coming from the reserves or are they coming from somewhere else?
Those are excellent questions. So first, on the $570,000. That was an estimated cost in early January, that first week when we were still going through the warming shelter expense items. And it is a budget number, not an actual number. And remember, part of my mantra is budget is authority to spend. It's not real money. It's just authority to spend real money. And it's an up-to amount. We're not going to spend more than that unless you authorize us to spend more than that or we're not going to authorize it or use it for a different purpose than what you've authorized. So we gave an accounting of actual costs up to... Or last week, we did that. And so far, on those actual costs, I'm going to try to find it right now, we have incurred about $300,000. We have final numbers that equal about $293,000. We still have an estimate out there at the convention center that is unknown, and we still have SPD overtime until we get the final payroll. So we could be up to about $465,000 at the very least. We have $300,000 total budget for this event that started in '21 and crossed over into '22, leaving a difference of about $163,000 between what we're asking in budget and what the costs are right now. So that difference would be solely dedicated to any additional costs incurred from the winter warming center. Or we would bring a final accounting to you, Counsel, of whether or not after that point, we retain that funding for summer and for the rest of the year. Because at this point, we have expended all that has been appropriated for emergency sheltering purposes for this year. But I do want to remind the Council, I know we're working on a plan, and I'm not the expert in that. I just bring you the numbers on that. But this winter event was at a premium price because most of these folks were on overtime because of the situation. Normally, they're not going to be that expensive. But we are working on a plan. We can bring that to you. When we bring the final accounting, you will get an option, an opportunity, I should say, to make a different decision of does that appropriation, that spending authority, stay in place for the rest of this year? Or do you want it to go back to the contingency reserve? Does that make sense? So I hope I covered, answered the different questions that you had there.
Yeah. Just to clarify again, so what we have planned for the rest of the year for cooling shelters, smoke shelters, and warming shelters into the winter is, I guess, the difference between 165-ish and 570? Or like, what's planned for the rest of the year?
Great question, and I'm not the person that can answer that. I believe staff has worked on a plan and can bring that forward. It might cost more. It might cost less. I honestly don't know until that plan is worked out. What I am seeing is that if the costs for this winter shelter do not... Stay within what we're estimating right now, that that $165,000 could be used for future sheltering events or it could go back to the contingency reserve. And that would be up to the Council to decide that.
All right. But do we have anything budgeted for the rest of the year?
No, sir. All that was budgeted was expended on this.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Okay. Thank you. We know from past experience that the amount left is not going to be enough. It never has been. It's not going to be enough for the rest of the year. And so I guess poor planning has got to... I'm wondering, how long are we going to wait for a plan to come forward so that we can look at the numbers? And as far as I'm concerned, budgeting is real money because it ends up being spent. But that aside, we can't wait any longer. And Tanya, you're in the hot seat. I apologize for that. But we need some answers from the administration because we're looking at a number right now that is not enough for the rest of the year. We know that because of past experience. We need a plan yesterday of what, how we're going to proceed for the rest of the year. So I can't stress that enough, Mr. Perkins. We really need to know. And I think the public deserves to know as well.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah. In that vein, I was wondering if there was any update on warming shelter for the rest of the winter that you could give to the public now?
There is nothing at this time that's finalized that I can speak to directly.
All right. So it's been almost a month, and there's still no plan?
Well, I was speaking specifically of a potential location that is still being discussed and looked at.
Do we know what phase that's in? Because I've heard that update for two or three weeks now that we have a location, contracts are being discussed. Do we have anything more that we can update people on? Because we still get people upset about it. It's still front page in the newspaper.
Unfortunately, Councilmember, right at this moment, this afternoon, no, I don't have anything specific or precise that I can say, A, B, C. Here's where it is. We're working on that as fast as we can, do the best of our ability to get that information to you as well as the members of the public.
Councilmember Stratten?
Just on that note, I'd like to remind Council and... Councilmember Zepone can help me out with numbers, but I believe that we have had, is it two or three more deaths of homeless people in homeless camps? Two or three? We've heard three.
Yeah. We've heard three.
Yeah.
Okay. Is your hand up again, Councilmember Zepone? Or is it still up from before? Okay. All right. Any... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah. I guess my question is, if we do, you know, if we do find a location and we're ready to execute tomorrow, given the very limited amount of available funding, where is the money going to come from? If it's not ARP and Council controls the ARP process, where would the money be coming from to pay for a new shelter site, warming center, whatever it would end up being?
You do have some options, City Council. You have very limited options, however. If it's really deemed an emergency and your desire, you could use the contingency reserve, which has an estimated 20-plus million in it. That is an option. There might be some other funds that we could look at and consider. There may be some granting opportunities, but that's not going to come fast enough. And then there's $1,590 and $1406 that could also go for this purpose. So that is definitely a larger strategic discussion for the City Council to consider. As soon as we can get some numbers or even if we had ballpark numbers and you desire to have a strategic session on that, I'm sure that we could start and queue up those kinds of conversations as well. But there are very limited funding sources for that at this time.
I feel like we're sort of headed down a path where we're going to get a plan at some point, and then we're going to be scrambling to figure out how to pay for it. And so I feel like perhaps now is the time for us to start having those conversations. And then hopefully, we will have a location and a facility or something stood up in the next week or two. But in the meantime, if we're not talking about where the money's going to come from, we might get to that point, and then we'll be scrambling to figure that out. So might need to identify that sooner rather than later.
Yep. We can certainly get that started.
And, you know, part of it is, what's the model for this new facility? We did approve money for homeless shelter as opposed to warming center for 2022 budget. And so if we get, enter into more of a long-term rental or purchase arrangement, you know, that would be a possibility, is that we would have money for sheltering that could then be scaled up. If it's a big enough space, which I think potentially we're looking at it is, it could be scaled up to add warming center beds as needed but keep 24/7 shelter going at all times at some level. So that's just an option out there as well. Okay. So now... Or anything else on this? Or anything else? Councilmember Bingo?
Sorry. Yeah. Quickly, after Mr. Ormsby's clarification on there, I just want to apologize to Tanya because I was kind of saying something was her fault when it wasn't her fault earlier, and legally, the process must happen a certain way there. So thank you, Tanya. Thank you for your work.
All right. And thank you. All right. Then, we'll get back to that executive session. Looks like we'll go till 5 o'clock by my clock on my computer. It's 4:11. Not quite. Actually, 4:55 we'll go to. And it's to further discuss labor negotiations. We aren't expecting to conduct any business afterwards, but we will come out at 4:55 and either announce the end of the briefing session or an extension. And so with that, I think Jacoby has sent links to the... Or he's working on sending a link to executive session. And we'll see those of you who are attending there. And for those of you who are watching or listening from afar, we'll be back at 4:55.
City Council is going to extend executive session for five more minutes until 5:00 PM. There's no expected action taken after they come back at 5:00. Thanks.
Look at those positions, look at what people are...